Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, so then I pronounce all the devotees, sorry for the delay, some issue in the network connection or on the laptop something. So, thank you all very much for joining in, today is a very, very auspicious day, today is ninth of April. It is the most auspicious occasion of the seventy-fifth appearance anniversary of His Holiness. Jai Padakaswami Shri Gurumaraj, Jai Padakaswami Shri Gurumaraj, Vyasa Puja Mahamohut Sabaki Jay. Today is as per the English calendar, there is a big celebration happening in Brindavan right from morning. And there is already lot of celebration happening right from the beginning of this month wherein Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu's Lotus. Lotus foot imprint, the you know, the Lotus feet imprint of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is being installed in all those places. Where Chaitanya Mahaprabhu visited in Brindavan Dam, so in Nandagang, in Pawanse Rover, in many, 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 many places of Brindavan. The Lotus feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is being installed under the supervision of His Holiness Jai Padakaswami Shri Gurumaraj. Gurumaraj himself has been little unwell, but this morning, today we got the latest report is that he is feeling healthy better. So, we've been chanting extra rounds for the good health and long life of His Holiness Jai Padakaswami Shri Gurumaraj. The main celebration will be on nineteenth in Mayapur Dam. So devotees like Karpa Guli Mathaji and others were asking if you can, you can, you can just go to Mayapur Dam. You know, being in the dam is auspicious, to take Darshan of a pure devotee is more auspicious, on the Vyasa Puja Day is most auspicious. Like that, there is a lot of, if it's possible, we should go. Alright, Hare Krishna, so on this auspicious day, let us start with our study of teachings of Lord Chaitanya. We are starting chapter number four today, let's start with prayers. Om Jnana Timananda Sya Jnana Anjana Shalakaya. Chakshurun Militam Yena Tasmai Sri Gurave Namaha. Sri Chaitanya Manobhistam Stapitam Yena Bhutale. Swayam Rupa Kadhamayam Dadatishva Padantikam. Vandeham Dhi Guru Sri Uta Padakamalam Sri Gurum Vaishnavam. Sri Rupam Saagrajatam Sahagana Raghunathanvitam Tamso Jeevam. Saathvaitam Saavadu Tam Parijana Sahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahagana Lalita Sri Vishakanvitam Sha. Namom Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Preesthaaya Bhutale Sri Mate Bhaktive Danth. Swami Niti Namine. Namaste Sarasvate Deva Gauravani Pracharinay. Nirvisesh Shunyavadi Vaschakadeesh Adarine. Namom Mahavadanyaya Krishna Prema Pradhayate. Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namne Gauradhusi Namaha. Panchadatva Atmagam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swaroopakam. Bhakta Vataram Bhakta Akyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam. He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagat Patet. Go Pisha Go Pika Kanta Radha Kanta Namusudhe. Tapta Kanchana Gaurangi Radhe Brinda Vaneshwari. Resha Hanusudhe Devi Pranamami Hari Priye. Mancha Kalpataroobiyascha. Kripasinduobhye Vacha Patithaanam Paavanebyo Vaishnavebyo Namum Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nikyananda. Sri Advaita Radha Shri Basadi Gaurubhakta Brinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Taranle. Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Taj Bhaktaaya Namum Namaha. Mookam Karoti Vachalam Pangum Langayate Girim Jetkrapadamaham Vandey Sri Gurum Dina Tharinam. Paramanandam Adamam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Mishvaram Hariyo. Hare Krishna, so then I pronounce all the devotees, thank you all for joining in for our study session today, auspicious day. Seventy-fifth, Vyasa Puja Mahamohut Savas for the English calendar of His Holiness Jai Padakaswami Shri Gurumaraj. So praying for Shri Gurumaraj's blessings for our endeavor to please Guru and Goranga by the study of teachings of Lord Chaitan and Bhagavat Gita. And our morning, early morning Brahman Murtha chanting, everything we're doing for the pleasure of Guru and Goranga. Hare Krishna, so we are on chapter number four, which is entitled The Wise Man, isn't it? Quite an interesting tagi, so before that, we will just see, in the first chapter, we saw how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu met Rupa Goswami and teachings to Rupa Goswami. Second and third chapters where how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu met Sanatana Goswami at Benares. How Sanatana Goswami actually escaped from the prison, came to Benares, met Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and what are the teachings of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu to Sanatana Goswami. So, this chapter entitled The Wise Man, isn't it? So, this is also continuation of the teachings of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. So, let's continue the reading, The Wise Man, right, this is very interesting. So, I would request devotees also to raise your hands and participate. By reading the content, I will start and then devotees who want to read may raise your hands. Chapter four entitled The Wise Man, okay, Shobha Mathaji, go ahead. Since no one can trace the history from there.
Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, Shri La Prapati Jay, The Wise Man. Since no one can trace the history of living entities entangled in material energy, the Lord says that it is. Beginningless, by beginningless, it is meant that conditional life exists prior to the creation. It is simply manifested during and after the creation. Due to forgetfulness of his nature as a living entity, although spirit suffers lot, all kinds of miseries in material existence. It should be understood that there are also living entities who are not entangled in this material energy. But are situated in this spiritual world, they are called liberated souls and are always engaged in Krishna consciousness, devotional service. The activities of those who are conditioned by material nature are taken into account. And in their mixed life, according to these activities, they are offered different types of material bodies. In the material world, the conditioned spirit soul is subjected to various rewards and punishments. When he is rewarded for his righteous activities, he is elevated to the higher planets where he becoming one of the many divine god. And when he is punished, punished for abominable activities, he is thrown into hellish planets. Where he suffers the miseries of material existence for existence more acutely. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu gives a very nice example of a punishment, of this punishment. Formerly, a king used to punish a criminal by drinking him into the, in the river. Raising him up again for breath and then again dunking, dunking in the water. Material nature punishes and rewards the individual in just the same way. When he is, is dunked in the water of material misery and when he is rewarded, he is now offered for some time. Elevation to the higher planet or to higher life stages is never permanent. One must again come down to the submerged in the water, all this is constantly going on, going on in this material existence. Sometimes one is elevated to higher planet, sometimes one is thrown into the hellish condition of material life.
Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna, so in this particular paragraphs, couple of paragraphs, Prabhupada is teaching us, there is no happiness in this material world. Right, wise man, wise man means intelligent person, Yajantihi Su Meetha Sah. Meetha Sah means intelligent people, what will intelligent people do in this age of Kali? They will practice the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, right, Krishna Varanam, Tushakrishna. Sangha Pangastra Parshugam, Yagnaya Sankirtana Parayat, right? The Yagnya for this age of Kali is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, Yagnaya Sankirtana Parayat. And who will take up this process, Yajantihi Su Meetha Sah. The most intelligent people will take up the process of Hare Krishna Mahamantra, knowing well that there is no happiness in this material world. Even if we get some kind of happiness, what is that kind of happiness? Prabhupada is giving a very beautiful example, so Prabhupada is saying, it's like when somebody is dunked into the river, what happens, we cannot breathe. And then when somebody pushes up, pulls us up and then like, oh, this is great relief, isn't it? So, that kind of relief is what, is what is happiness, there is no happiness actually in this material world. But then we are thinking that, that kind of a momentary relief from pain and then somebody is just pushing us under the water. So, this kind of momentary relief from pain is what, is what we think as happiness. But it is not happy, just a. Matras Prashastikaontaya Sito Ushna Skodukkada. The right, the happiness comes, distress comes, heat comes, cold comes, like the seasons keep changing, now it is heavy summer here in Mumbai, right, we get mangoes. So, the heat gives us like, you're feeling, oh my god, it's so hot, but only in such a season we'll get mangoes, right, one mango, you need to have the hot season. So, whether or not something is bad or something is desirable, everything has its pros and cons, in this material world, it is a world of duality. Duality means happiness means distress is just on the handle. If there is heat, then cold or the, you know, the cold climate is just about coming, you know? So, there is nothing permanent in this material world and just, just like a person, when he feels relief, when he is picked out of the water. Like that only, we also feel a sense of happiness, when we are in, when we are suffering from so much of misery, but then somebody, somebody helps us with it, right? For example, you know, if we are having severe headache and then somebody is just giving us a medicine. Or somebody, somebody is just pressing our head, doing head massage for us, right? And then what, what it feels, oh my god, this is so wonderful, my headache is gone, so we feel that, oh, this is happiness, right? But that is not happiness, that is just relieving oneself from the headache, right? So, that's what it is, and then we know, we don't know when the next headache is just about, just around the corner, maybe after an hour, again our head may start aching. So, is this the kind of pleasure that we want to be, we want to work for, of course not, right? We want to work for that kind of pleasure which is never ending. And that kind of pleasure can be obtained only by serving the Supreme Lord and not by sense gratification and not by trying to satisfy one's own senses, that's what it is. Alright, let's move forward in this regard, Harjit Mathaji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Mathaji, Dhondav Pranam.
Hare Krishna, Dhondav Pranam, yes.
In this regard, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu recited a nice verse from Shri Man Bhagavatam eleven point two point three seven. That is part of the instruction of Narada Munni to Vasudevah, the father of Krishna. By, um, Mathaji could please.
Tanma Yayato Buddha Abajetam Bhagyay Kayesham Gurudeva Taktma.
In this verse, when, which Narada Munni quotes, quotes from the instruction that the nine yoginindras imparted to Maharaja. Nimi Maya is defined as forgetfulness of one's relationship with Krishna, actually Maya means that which is not. Thus, it is a false to think that the living entity has no connection with the Supreme Lord. He may not believe in the existence of God or he may think he has no relationship with God, but these ideas are all illusion or Maya. Due to absorption, or in this false conception of life, a man is always fearful and full of anxieties. In other words, Maya is the godless conception of life, one who is actually learned in the Vedic literature surrendered. Into the Supreme Lord with great devotion and accepts him as a supreme soul. Sorry, goal, yeah, goal, when a living entity forgets the constitutional nature of, of his relationship with God. He is at once overwhelmed with, by the external energy. This is the cause of his full, false ego, his false identification of the body with the self. Indeed, his whole conception of the material universe arises from the false identification with the body. For he becomes attached to the body and he is, it's by products. To escape this entanglement, he has only to perform his duty. Namely, to surrender unto the Supreme Lord with indigence, with the devotion and with sincere Krishna consciousness. A conditioned soul falsely thinks himself happy in the material world. But if he is favored by an, by an unalloyed devotee, if he hears the unalloyed devotee's instruction. He gives up his desires for the material enjoyment and becomes enlightened in Krishna consciousness. As soon as one enters into Krishna consciousness, his desires for material enjoyment is at once vanicused. And he gradually becomes free from material entanglement. There is no quotient of darkness, when, when there is light and Krishna consciousness is the light. That discipline, dispels, sorry, dispels the darkness of material sense enjoyment.
Thank you, Mathi.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, so what is ignorance that we are in, the ignorance is not knowing our constitutional position, what is, who am I? What is my relationship with the Lord, why am I suffering in this world? And what should I do to re-establish my relationship with Krishna? And what is the goal of my human form of life, right, all of these are questions for which we need answers. But somehow, we are trying to divert from the real problems of, of life. To running behind those problems which we have created for ourselves, right? Which is because we want, we want a four-bedroom flat, we want to work hard. And then we are thinking, why am I not able to, you know, get that promotion, why am I not able to get that, get that hike? Why am I not able to get that bonus which will give me happiness because that will enable me to get me, get the four BHK, right? So, in this way, we, we, so the mind wants to think of some escapist situation, right? Sometimes, sometimes, when we, when we are not able to find the real problems or we not able to find the solutions to the real problems, we find small, small problems. And then we try to solve that and then we feel very happy, oh yeah, at least something I have solved, isn't it? So, the mind tricks us like that, so that is what is the, that is what our position. Sometimes you are happy, sometimes you are sad, but we are pursuing the wrong goal. That is why even after obtaining the happiness of getting a bonus or getting a promotion or getting that four BHK home, right? We still feel we are not happy, right, it may give us a momentary happiness that, yeah, a sense of achievement. But then, after that, again, we are facing the same problems, we are having the same headache, we are having the same problem. You know, one day the maid does not come, we have to do the vessels and then we are thinking, oh god, what is this? Such a small thing also can cause so much of trouble for us, why? Because, because our mind is so conditioned that when things go according to our way, we are happy. If things don't go according to our way, then we are sad, right? But, but what is real happiness, real happiness is dovetailing our, our endeavor in service of the Supreme Personality, you have got it, right? The other day, we were giving the example of a person in the mental hospital, right? So, so this one person is shouting in the mental hospital, I am the Prime Minister, I am the Prime Minister and everybody is laughing, Arayar, Isko, Yero Padalay. Right, but then, even we are like, we are like that, that mental person, right? We are in this hospital, this hospital, we can come here for reformation. And then, instead of understanding that I am the servant of the Lord, we are thinking, we are the controllers. Oh, I should be the controller, I should be the enjoyer, in our frustration to enjoy, our, I never desire to enjoy, you are so frustrated. We are actually like that madman in that hospital who also thinks that he is the Prime Minister, which means what? He also wants to be the controller, isn't it? And we are thinking that I am the controller, I am the enjoyer and while we know that even, even our basic problems cannot be solved by our own selves, right? If that be the case, how can we be a controller, how can we be enjoyer? We are no better than the, than the patient in the mental hospital, in fact Krishna calls this world a hospital, right? Because we've come here for reformation, Krishna calls this, this material world is a prison house. Because we are here for reformation, we are here to, to take up the right medicine, right? That's what you get in a hospital, right, you get the right medicine and then you need to follow a proper diet and then you will get, you will get relief from the hospital, you can go home. So, that's exactly what we are also doing, we are diseased with the, with the, we are diseased because we want to enjoy this world of material existence which is temporary. Which is dukkhaliam, we are searching for happiness in the dukkhaliam, we are so frustrated, so in this way, we are diseased. And because of that, the Lord has kindly given us the medicine which is. So, Enichi Ushadi Maya, right, what is the Ushadi, what is the medicine to get cured of this disease of material existence? The, the disease of enjoying this material world, that is the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Nasibaro Lagi Hari Navamahamantra Lau Tumi Magi, come and ask for the Hare Krishna Mahamantra and chant with sincerity, right? But we are all fortunate that we've all received the Hare Krishna Mahamantra, right? So, we need to take the medicine properly and we need also practice a proper diet, what is a proper diet? I having only Krishna Prasada and that will help us develop all the qualities which are necessary, such as humility, such as developing the right identity. Jivareswarupay Krishnaer Nityadas, that is the first step to identify who am I. And when we identify who, who I am and I identify that I am the servant of the Lord. Then I get the knowledge of how I should behave in that relationship with the Lord, right? Prabhupada gives a beautiful example, how when there is light, the darkness automatically gets dissipated. Similarly, when there is light of knowledge that who I am, then I work for the satisfaction of the Lord. Because I know that the pleasure of the Lord is what is going to give me pleasure. Otherwise, all kinds of endeavors to get that kind of pleasure is going to become elusive, right? Because it's illusion, I can never become happy independent in this material world, it is going to cause me only frustration, right? And then Krishna also gives a formula, which we'll be studying later in the later sections. Krishna is giving us a formula that you are in the material world, that is my external energy, you're going to have a difficult time, it is dukkhaliam, you want to have miseries. So, you will not be able to cross over it also, but there is a way by which you can cross over it. How you can cross over it, you can cross over the ocean of material existence by, by actually surrendering unto me. (Singing) Very, very difficult to cross over. Maam E Vaye Prapadyante Maya E Tam Tarantite, but you can cross over this threefold miseries of material existence and come back to me. This place is sukhaliam, this place, there is eternal happiness, not bound by the three modes of material nature. There is no, there is no distress, there is no, there is no duality, it is always sukham, it is very, very blissful. So, please come back here, that's what Krishna is asking us to do, but we unfortunately, we don't have any taste, right? So, we are trying to develop that taste by studying Shri La Prapati's books, yeah? So, let's move forward, Sindhu Mathaji, go ahead, a Krishna conscious person is never.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, Shri La Prapati Jay. The Krishna conscious person never under the false conception that he is one with God. Knowing that he would not be happy working for himself, he engages all his energies in the service of the Supreme Lord. And thereby gains release from the clutches of the illusory material energy. In this connection, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu quoted a verse from the Bhagavat Gita seven point forty where Krishna states. My material energy composed of the three modes of material nature is very strong. It's very difficult to escape the clutches of the material energy, but one who surrenders unto me is easily freed from the clutches of Maya. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu went on to teach that each and every moment the conditioned soul is engaged in some protective activity, he forgets his real identity. Sometimes when he is tired of material realities, he wants liberation and hankers to become one with the Supreme. But at the other times, he thinks that by working hard to gratify his senses, he will be happy. In both the cases, he is covered by the material energy, for the enlightenment of such bewildered conditioned souls. Who are working under a false identification, the Supreme Lord has presented us with volume in the Vedic literature, including the Vedas, the Puranas and the Vedanta Shuddha. These are all intended to guide the human being back to God. Chaitanya Mahaprabhu further explained that when a conditioned soul is accepted by a spiritual master out of his mercy and is guided by the super soul. The soul can take advantage of the various Vedic scriptures, become enlightened and make progress in spiritual realization. This because Lord Krishna is always merciful to his devotees, that he has presented all these Vedic literature by which one can understand his relationship with him. And can act on the basis of that relationship, in this way, one is gifted with the ultimate goal of life. Actually, every living entity, destined to understand his relationship with the Supreme Lord and ultimately to reach him. The execution of duties to attain this perfection is known as devotional service and in maturity, such devotional service becomes love of God, the true goal of life for every living being. The living entity should not desire success in religious rituals, economic development or sense enjoyment or even liberation. One should desire only to achieve the stage of transcendental loving service to the Lord, pure Krishna consciousness. The all attractive features of Lord Krishna help one attain the stage of pure devotional service. And one who engages in the preliminary practices of Krishna consciousness can ultimately realize the relationship between himself and Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathi. So, Hare Krishna, so there are three things that Prabhupada is very beautifully described in the last two paragraphs. Sambandha Abideya and Prayojana, right? First is to establish our relationship with the Lord, Jivareswarupay Krishnaer Nityadas. Right, I am the servant of the Supreme Personality, you have got it, Lord Sri Krishna. And then what is Abideya, what is the process? How do I, how do I, now I understood theoretically, I am the servant of the Lord. But how am I going to experience it and put it practically in my life so that I experience the bliss? Right, that is by following the Navavida Bhakti as given by Rupa Goswami. What is that, Pralad Marath says, right? Shravanam Kirtram Vishnum Vishnu Smaranam Archanam Mandram Dasim Sakhim Akmenivedram. These seven angas of, nine angas of bhakti, never angas of bhakti when we practice, then what happens? We are, we are reviving our Krishna consciousness that is lying dormant in our heart. Because we have gone through several lifetimes after lifetime, we have gone through different species. Trying to like, you know, as a hog eating stool, as a, as a dog, you know, being loyal to all the unnecessary masters of this world. We've developed so many, so many illegitimate desires, illegitimate desires means desires for personal sense gratification, even as human being. Right, we've slowly evolved, right, because there is no falling down from the body of a hog or a dog. Right, we've slowly, slowly evolved and then we come to the stage of a human being and now is a chance for us. That we don't fall down, but rather not just maintain our human life, not just get another human body. But rather, we want to go back home back to God in this lifetime, so what are we supposed to do to attain that state of Krishna prema? Having attained one, Krishna says, one does not have to come back to this material world. (Singing) How do we go back to Lord Sri Krishna, how do you develop Krishna prema? That is by the process of Abideya and simply by following Abideya, will we get Krishna prema? No, why? Because our endeavor is only as much as what we can do, we have to endeavor our best, but what is more important, what is the bigger part of it? Is waiting for the Lord's mercy, whenever the Lord's mercy meets our endeavor, right? You always remember the Damodar Leela, right? Yashadamaya was running behind Krishna, so much of a difficult endeavor for her to run behind Krishna with her bulky body and Prabhupada explains very beautifully the Krishna book. She's running, she's sweating, she's tired, the, the flowers on her hair, on her hair are falling down and then yet she is not giving up. She just wants to run and catch Krishna and Krishna is saying, oh, my mother is so much determined and hard, you know, she's working so hard without giving up, simply to catch me. When somebody endeavors like this to catch Krishna, Krishna is most merciful, Krishna allows himself to be caught by the love and the sincerity of the devotee. And that is our only hope, right? Our hope is not our endeavor, but our hope is Krishna will be pleased with our endeavor and Krishna will show his mercy on us. That is the way we will be able to realize our relationship with Krishna, work in that relationship and also, and also attain Krishna prema. It's only be the mercy of the Lord, but the Lord is pleased only by our sincere endeavor, so that is why we are endeavoring. And by when Krishna is pleased, then we will attain our desired success, until such time, we need to endeavor with utshahar, nishyaad and dharya. Alright, Moni Malamathaji, go ahead, in this connection, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dhondav Pranam.
Yes.
In this connection, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu related a story from Shri La Madhavacharya commentary on the, on the eleventh of Shrimad Bhagavatam. Five point five ten to thirteen, this story involves the instruction of an astrologer Sarvabhama to a poor.
Parvagya.
Parvagya, to a poor man who came to, who came to him, came to have his future told. When the astrologer saw the man's horoscope, he was astonished that the man was so poor, so poor. And he said to him, when are you so, why are you so unhappy? From your horoscope, I can see that you have a hidden treasure left to you by your father. However, the horoscope indicates that your father could not disclose this to you because he died in a foreign place. But now you can search out this treasure and be happy, this story is cited. Because the living entity is suffering due, due to his ignorance of the hidden treasure of his supreme father Krishna. That treasure too is love of Godhead and in every Vedic scripture, the conditioned soul is advised to find it. As stated in the Bhagavat Gita, although the conditioned soul is the son of, is the.
Son of the wealthiest personality, Krishna.
Sorry, son of the wealthiest personality, the personality of Godhead, he does not realize it and therefore the Vedic literature is given to him. To help him search out his father and his paternal property. The astrologer further advised the poor man, don't dig, don't dig on the southern side of your house to find the treasure. For if you do so, you will be attacked by a poisonous, poisonous whips and will be baffled in your efforts to find the treasure. And will be baffled in your efforts to find the treasure, treasure. Uh, search on the eastern side, uh, where there is actual light. Which is devotional service or Krishna consciousness. On the southern, southern side, there are Vedic rituals. On the western side, there is mental speculation and on the northern side, there is a meditational yoga.
Thank you. Very nice, isn't it? Uh, yeah, thank you so much, Madhaji. Yeah, very, very interesting, right? How, um, you know, uh, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was explaining it, right? Uh, it's, it's like, we, we are all, we are all very rich actually, right? But it's just like a person who first forgotten it, right? They are all suffering from amnesia, looks like, right? That we've forgotten that we are the, we are the sons and daughters of the, of the richest personality, but some of you have forgotten and they are. You know, we are just scampering around for small, small things. Uh, but we are going to get, we have the highest treasure. We simply need somebody to tell us, like Hanuman. When he was about to, uh, you know, he wanted to go to Lanka, uh, to retrieve, um, you know, to find out where Mother Sita is. And, uh, you know, he wants to go so much, but he's not able to go, right? Because he thinks that I, I cannot, I cannot jump over. And then Jambavan comes and tells him, right? Uh, you're Hanuman. Right? Earlier when you used to have a lot of powers, you used to go to the sun god and think the sun god is the sun, uh, is an apple and then, you know, you wanted to eat it. And then all of them told them, you will forget all your powers because you are misusing them and you are, and you are actually causing a lot of trouble, right? They all cursed him. Uh, cursed in the sense, they just told him that you will not remember your powers, right? As a small boy who's quite naughty. But later on, Jambavan told him that as Jambavan told Hanuman that you are actually Hanuman, you have got so much of powers. You can cross over the entire Yojanas in one jump. You can go to Lanka and then you can jump back. And then as he was revealing the pa, the powers, Hanuman's size also was growing and it became so huge. Hmm. So in this way, we are also, uh, you know, we are the, we are so much wealthy. Hmm. We have the wealth or the treasure of the love of Krishna. Like the other day, we were talking about, um. An example where, you know, a rich man calls, uh, everybody and asks them whatever they want. And somebody asks for, uh, you know, a big house, somebody asks for nice provisions and somebody asks for nice jewels and ornaments and clothing, et cetera. But one intelligent person asks, I want to become your friend, right? Because if one is friends with the Lord or with the king for that reason, right? One can get everything. Like that person got, he just invited the king. Uh, for, you know, for prasadam at his home and his home was a jopri, right? So the home was built into a palace, all the provisions required was brought in and then all the clothes were given, you know, to, to him and his family. And then the roads were also done so much so that the king is comfortable in coming to this place. You know, the, the, how home is done very nicely. So everything can be obtained, simply when we know our relationship with the Lord. We need to ask the right question or we need to, uh, we need to have the right kind of desire, right? If you are asked, like Druva Marath also told, that I was asking for, uh, you know, small broken glass pieces, but actually I got the diamond. Right? Why did he get the diamond? Although he simply wanted the glass pieces. It is by the mercy of a spiritual master. Now, because he followed the instructions of Narada Munni, he finally understood that this is what I need to, uh, this is what I have got. Whereas I have, I have actually desired something very less, right? So in this way, when we desire to serve Krishna, to please Krishna, uh, to, uh, to, uh. Uh, to, um, serve according to the instructions of our guru, right? Serve according to instructions of Shilpa Prabhupada, then what do we do? By their mercy, we access the greatest treasure of Krishna prema. Having attained which, all of the other things are so insignificant, are so insignificant. Are so temporary, are so useless in comparison to this treasure. That will give us eternal bliss, that will give us eternal residence in the same loca as that of the Lord. That is going to give us eternal opportunity to serve Sushirada and Krishna, to serve Guru and Goranga. What better treasure can we, can we even desire for? But unfortunately, what are we desiring? We are desiring all the, all the. Uh, nonsensical things for this material world which is keeping us entangled, right? So this is what Prabhupada is actually repeating, uh, where, um, uh, you know. Sometimes we are, we are speculating mentally that, oh, I should want this, I should not be doing this, right? That's why very beautifully, uh, it is mentioned here, take only the eastern side. Don't take the southern side, northern side or western side because one is mental speculation. One is, uh, you know, doing ritualistic, uh, you know, worship without, without having the goal in place. The other is, uh, you know, uh, Bukti Mukti, Bukti Mukti are both, both are said to be witches. Right? Sometimes you want sense gratification, sometimes you want to get, you are so frustrated with sense gratification. That we think that I don't want all of this. I want to get liberated. I don't want this body. That's why we say that I, some maya vades. They say that, you know, I don't want this body or even the brahma vades for that reason. Because they know that they associate this body with misery, right? Because we get headaches, stomachache, whatnot, right? And all the pains are because of this material body, right? And that is why they say that we want to liberate ourselves from this platform of suffering. And that is why even mukti is said to be a kind of sense gratification. So what is it that they're telling here? Don't go on all the wrong sides, right? There is only one way to the treasure. What is that path? That path is devotional service. So don't get bewildered by the other paths, right? Now, the other, the other paths will, will take you, but it will take a long time. You realize you go the wrong way and then somebody corrects you and then you turn around, you walk all the way back. So don't waste your time, right? The real process is already given by Chaitanya Mahaprabhu in this age of Kali. There is no other way. There is no other way. There is no other way. Other than chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, other than engaging in devotional service, which begins. And ends with the chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamantra. So simply we have to do this, obtain our desired goal, right? We should not be, we need not, uh, you know, think of anything else, engage our material intelligence to find out other ways to get better treasures. There is no better treasure, there is no other way, other than chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra. Okay, Moni Mala Madhaji, go ahead. The astrologer's advice should be.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji. Should be carefully noted by everyone. Yes, Madhaji.
Okay, okay. So we'll ask Karpa Goli Madhaji to read and then we'll end. Yeah, Hare Krishna, yes.
Thank you, Madhaji. Thank you. And the astrologist's advice should be carefully noted by everyone. If one searches for the ultimate goal by the Vedic ritual process, he will truly be baffled. Such a process involves the performance of rituals under the guidance of a priest who takes money in change for service. A man may think he will be happy by performing such rituals, but this is not true. Even if he does gain some result from them, it is only temporary. His materials and distresses will continue. So he will never be, become truly happy by following the ritual, ritualistic process. Instead of his, his material pains will increase more and more. The same may be said for digging on the northern side or searching for the treasure of love of God by means of the meditation yoga process. The perfection of this process is to think oneself one with the Supreme Lord. But by, but this merging into the Supreme is like being swallowed by a large serpent. Sometimes a small serpent is swallowed by a large serpent and merging into the spiritual existence of the Supreme is analogous. While a small serpent is, is searching after perfection, he is swallowed. This is a spiritual suicide. On the western side, there is also an impediment in the form of, uh, yaksha. The evil spirit who protects the treasure. This yaksha is, uh, jnana yoga, the speculative process of self-realization. The idea is that a hidden treasure can never be found by one who asks for that, asks the favor of a yaksha to attain it. The result is that one will simply be killed. So, uh, so while the yogi is practicing, uh, practicing meditation is like a small serpent. Being swallowed by a large serpent, practicing the speculative process to attain the treasure of love of God is also suicide, suicidal. Uh, can you continue, Madhaji? The only. The, the, the only possibility then is to search for the hidden treasure on the eastern side. Which represents the process of devotional service in full Krishna consciousness. Indeed, the process of devotional service itself is the perpetual hidden treasure. And one who attains it, uh, to it becomes perpetually rich. One who is well in devotional service to Krishna is always in need of material gain. Sometimes he suffers the bites of poisonous creatures and is baffled and sometimes he follows his philosophy of monism. And thereby he, thereby loses his identity, identity and is swallowed by a large serpent. It is only by abandoning all this and becoming fit in Krishna consciousness, devotional service to the Lord and that. One can actually achieve the perfection of life. Thank you, Madhaji.
Thank you so much, Karpa Goli Madhaji. Yeah. So, there is only one path and there is only one goal, right? What is the one path? The path of devotional service. And what is the one goal Krishna prema? And how do we attain that process of, uh, Krishna prema? How do we perform this process of devotional service? Is what is the next chapter all about, which is entitled, how to approach God, right? How do we approach God? It's very, very clearly already mentioned. How we approach God? By understanding our relationship with the Lord, by following the processes prescribed in the Vedic literature, how to attain God. And then we can attain the Lord only by the Lord's own mercy, right? Right? The Lord will reveal himself according to, uh, according to how much we are surrendered to the Lord. So we have to show our, uh, show our endeavor to the Lord, show our sincerity to the Lord by continuously endeavoring with determination. Enthusiasm and patience. And when the Lord is pleased by our endeavor, we will get the desired success of Krishna prema. So with that, uh, we will end, um, and today I'll be, um, you know, I'm, I'm just, uh, I was actually, God, they are all late because I was. Um, I was dressing my deities also, so I'll be sharing the photographs in some time. Uh, so I would request devotees can, if possible, chant extra rounds of Hare Krishna Mahamantra. For the good health and long life, it is Gurumaraj, uh, it is Gurumaraj seventy fifth, uh, Vyasa Puja, Maha Mahutsava. Uh, uh, according to the English calendar, hmm, they, according to Tiri, it comes on nineteenth and Gurumaraj is currently. Uh, mostly he'll be going to Brindavan Dam, uh, because he was in the hospital. But, uh, the, the report is positive, like in the sense, Gurumaraj is feeling better since morning. And of course, the celebration has already begun, like I mentioned, uh, the lotus, the lotus, uh, feet of Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Are being installed in various places where Chaitanya Mahaprabhu visited during his, uh, Brindavan Yatra. So the celebration continues and nineteenth, the celebration is happening in Mayapur Dham. So like that. So Hare Krishna, so please do chant extra rounds and then, um. Uh, and then, yeah, we'll meet, we'll meet tomorrow unless, uh, devotees have any questions or queries, you may raise your hands. We'll do a quick. Um, Haridam Sangkirtan, we'll sing that, uh, what Chaitanya Mahaprabhu sang, uh, on his way as he passed through the Jarikan forest as he. Uh, was, was going towards Brindavan Dam, we'll sing that kirtan. Devotees can switch on your cameras and if there are any queries or questions or realizations devotees want to share, you may raise your hands. Dama, oh, Vishnupada, Krishna Krishna, Uthale. Shrimate Bhaktire, Rant, Swamini, Tri, Namine. Namaste, Saraswate Devi, Gauravani Prachariné. Jaya Sri Krishna, Cheethanaya, Prabhu, Nityananda. Sri Advaita, Gada, Ral, Shiva, Sadhi, Gauravapavandha, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Ram Rama, Hare Hare, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ramu Ramu. Hare Hare, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna. Krishna Kesava, Krishna Kesava, Krishna Kesava, Pahima. Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Raksham. Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Pahima. Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Raksham. Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Krishna. 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 Krishna Kesava, Krishna Kesava, Krishna Kesava, Pahima. Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Ramu Raghava, Raksham. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ramu Ramu, Hare Hare. Jaya Gauranitai, 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 Gauranitai. Jaya, Jaya, Daganath, Balude, Subhadra. Sudarshan Jaya, Palagopal, Palagopal, Palagopal. Palagopal Jaya, Rupmini Vithal, Jaya Gurva, Yudhappa Jaya. Gopalvi Jaya, Praladar Singh Jaya, Jaya Prabhu Pa, Jaya Prabhu Pa. Jaya Prabhu Pa, Jaya Jaya Guru Dev, Guru Dev. Guru Dev, Guru Dev, Jaya Jaya Guru Dev, Guru Dev. Guru Dev, Guru Dev, Niktae, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol. Gaurahari Bol, Niktae, Gaurahari Bol, Niktae, Gaurahari Bol, Gaurahari Bol. Gaurahari Bol, Niktae, Gaurahari Bol, Niktae, Gaurahari Bol. Hare Bol, Hare Bol, Hare Bol. Shri Hari Naama Sangkirtan Ki Jay, All Gauri Shri Shiguru and Sri Goranga. Panchakalpataru Vyashya, Prabhasindu Veevacha, Patithanam Pavanevyo, Vaishnavavyo, Namu Namu. Anantikoti Vaishnava Vrindaki Jay, Niktae Gauraharibol. Hare Krishna. So I am able to see Shoba Madhaji, Karpa Goli Madhaji, Rohini Madhaji, Mala Madhaji. Moni Mala Madhaji, Harjeet Madhaji, Sindhu Madhaji, Sarugopishri Madhaji, Nisha Madhaji. Navakishori Madhaji, Manasi Madhaji, Santushtruchaitanya Prabhuji. Thank you so much for joining in. Um, so we'll meet tomorrow. I don't see any hands up for any questions. So we need tomorrow morning, five o'clock, Brahmortha chanting. Uh, and then until then, we can, uh, continue to chant extra rounds, sing nice versions for the pleasure of the Lord. Uh, worship the deities, right? Because we, when we do seva, we, uh, we do seva through our guru, right? We cannot directly approach their lordship. So when we are, when we are bathing and dressing the deities, whatever seva we are doing, we are singing for the Lord. Whatever we are doing, we are becoming an instrument in the hands of our guru. And that is a mode in which we need to render service. And that is, that mode only pleases guru and thereby pleases Goranga. So that is the mode we want to cultivate. On this auspicious day, we pray for the blessings of Guru Maharaj. It's only by the mercy of Guru Maharaj that we're able to engage in, um, in some kind of devotional service according to our limited capacity. Very, very grateful, uh, to Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Guru Dev and all the assembled Vaishnavas who are giving us opportunity to serve. So, thank you all very much. Hare Krishna, Jagatguru, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Guru Devakii Jay. Anantikoti Vaishnava Vrindaki Jay, Niktae Gauraharibol. Thank you very much. Hare Bol, Hare Krishna.